Good afternoon, everyone. We have a quorum. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative for the Sixth Council District, and Chairperson for the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon, the committee will hear Bills Number 22-0095R, 22-0096R, and 22-0192. In attendance for members of the committee, we have Councilman John Bullock of the Ninth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Ryan Dorsey of the Third District. Councilman Antonio Glover of the Thirteenth District. Councilwoman Odette Ramos of the Fourteenth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Robert Stokes of the Twelfth District. And that's all we have at this moment. From the Council President's staff, we have Nikki Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And... Let's see, who else am I missing from the President's office? I think you're holding up the fort, Nikki. Office of the Mayor's Staff, we have Nina Thimulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Before we begin, I would like to remind you that if you are not speaking, please keep yourself on mute. Do not take yourself off of mute unless you are recognized. When recognized, please identify yourself. Once you have finished speaking, please put yourself back on mute. And we're... Let's begin. We'll start with Bill Number 22-0095R, "The Baltimore City Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy: Baltimore Together, A Platform For Inclusive Prosperity." With the purpose of adopting Baltimore City's Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, "Baltimore Together: A Platform For Inclusive Prosperity" and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on March 7, 2022. This bill is sponsored by the Council President on behalf of the Administration and the Baltimore Development Corporation. And at this time, would the Office of the President like to make any comments on this bill before we move on? Hearing none. Let's go straight into the committee. We'll now hear from agency representatives. And we'll go ahead and start with the city solicitor.
Madam Chair, this is Hillary Ruley from the Law Department. We stand by our report with approving the bill for Form and Legal Sufficiency. No issues.
Thank you, Hillary. Okay, well, now go ahead and move into the Baltimore Development Corporation. And we have Kim Clark here from the Baltimore Development Corporation. And Kim, just one... And when you do your presentation, just want to make sure that you discuss the CED's Grants Program and what the grants will be used for and how the locations or projects around the city are selected for use of the grants.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Kim Clark, Executive Vice President with Baltimore Development Corporation. The Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy is one that the city develops every five years. This one got a little bit stretched out in the planning for it because of COVID-19. The Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy is a strategy that's submitted to the Economic Development Administration so that Baltimore entities in Baltimore City can apply for funds from the EDA. We do not control those applications, nor who applies for them. We usually have a discussion with them. If we know that... If BDC knows that an entity is applying for funds through the EDA, we like to have a discussion with them, share the SED's information, this one being Baltimore Together, to ensure that their goals and priorities for use of the money aligns with the Baltimore Together strategy. They then forward their application to the EDA, and it's up to the Economic Development Administration to yea or nay as far as if they're going to receive the grant or not. We do try to ensure as much as possible that they are in alignment with the Baltimore Together strategy.
Thank you. And I also want to recognize Member of the Committee and Council Representative of the Fourth District, Mark Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Does the committee have any questions for the Baltimore Development Corporation at this time? Moving on...
No, Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. I think Councilwoman Ramos also had a question. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'm trying to understand. This is an administration resolution. Are we, the council, required to adopt a report for some legally required purpose or something? Just trying to get a... Or are we just being informed of this report? What's going on here?
So you should have received a copy. All the council people were copies of the final report, were shared with all of the council folks. Hard copies, I believe, were delivered to your offices. This is a resolution. The Economic Development Administration likes to have a resolution from the jurisdiction included in the quote "packet" of application for the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, which shows that you all are interested and approve of the strategy itself and for what it can bring, the potential that it brings to Baltimore City.
Thank you. How long did it take to prepare this strategy?
It was over two years. There were in-person before COVID. There were in-person meetings with the public. There were several committees formed that include businesses and residents from around the city, as well as workforce development folks. It also included our local maker and arts community. And then, once COVID hit and we kind of hit this, all right, what do we do now? How do we keep people informed? We put up what's called the Convoy Platform, which enabled public input. We received over 100 comments on the draft strategy. There was also included in our public outreach, once COVID hit. It was posted on like the electronic billboard in the station arts community that can be seen from pretty much anywhere. The Baltimore Together and where you could go and how to access to that.
You had froze a little bit, so we missed some.
Oh, I did.
I've been able to hear her the whole time.
Oh, okay. Well, I didn't, and some others, it looks like.
Okay, is that better?
I never lost you.
Okay. Well, it looks like the Council Vice President.
Yeah, I think it's a problem in City Hall. I think it's the bandwidth issue in City Hall.
I know we have an issue here because we have the Baltimore City internal. And if more than like a couple of us are using this, it's a problem.
Um, I guess... I guess, uh... I'm not... I guess I'd have to look more closely at the report. I did find a copy of it, I guess, and kind of started poking through it. I mean, I guess I have certain ideas about, you know, what I think it should include if I were to consider it really comprehensive.
Yeah, there should be a copy with a synopsis.
There's a copy online. I mean, I'm able to find it online.
And with your hearing packet as well.
Yeah.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, it's, you know, looking through it just at a glance, you know, there are things that I think are not included that I think really would need to be included for me to consider it comprehensive in terms of economic and community development. But that's just kind of at a glance. You know, I think that a really critical part, for example, of a comprehensive economic strategy is about unburdening household costs, right? And making neighborhoods more diverse in their housing typologies. And at a glance, I don't see anything particularly about that in here. Is that something that I'm missing?
No, I don't think you are. When we started out, we were much more inclusive in working with the Housing Department. But again, when this started, it was two administrations ago. And so, as personnel have changed, so what we've tried to do is incorporate principles from the Housing's comprehensive strategy, their strategy that they're going to be using, including principles of theirs in ours and include ours in theirs. There were folks from the Housing Department included in the Advisory Committee, which oversaw all of the other committees that were formed for the Economic Development Strategy. But completely understand where you're coming from as far as the housing typology, et cetera. We expect that that will be included in the Housing Department's strategy that they develop.
Well, we do have Stephanie here, and we'll let her speak when it's her.
Yeah, I just think it's not... It seems like that's something that is inherently part of a successful economic development strategy. And if we're saying that this is the economic development strategy, it doesn't make sense to me to say that that's only articulated in somebody else's document.
Understood.
Otherwise, yeah.
Point well taken, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you.
Um... Yes, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have it right here. I have the report. I had a question about... So BDC was the sort of entity that worked to put this together. The EDC, right? I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, is then BDC the entity to try to like make all this happen? Or was BDC the entity to just be charged with putting this together? And then it's the mayor's office or whoever? I'm just trying to understand who implements this?
It is our goal to implement the strategy, but we can't do it alone. We have to have the backing of the City Council and the mayor's office. Our goal is to try to have someone to... whose job is strictly to oversee and implement the goals set forth in the Baltimore Together SEDs.
So in the equitable neighborhood development piece, one of the things that I've mentioned to BBMR and others because they've been, you know, kind of retooling how they're doing that particular pillar. To me, neighborhood equitable development is actually being really intentional about investing in the communities that have traditionally been ignored. That's not what I see here unless I'm missing it. Can you tell us a little bit more about what that strategy looks like within this?
You know what? I'm going to get Colin to come on in and talk about all this because he's much more ingrained in the details. So give me one second. Let me go grab him.
So while you're doing that, I'm going to go ahead and move to Finance, and we'll come back because I think Finance really gave an informative report regarding the Enterprise Zone Tax Credits and the city's initiative to review tax credits. So while she's getting Colin on, we'll go ahead and have the representative from Finance.
I... Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you were cut off a little bit, so I assume that you introduced me. Pedro Ponte, Assistant Boarding Director. You are asking me to talk about the Enterprise Zone legislation or this legislation?
Um, you know what? That's for the next bill, so my...
Oh, yeah, correct. But in regards to this particular legislation, we stand by our report. We see the resolution as a step forward for moving the city.
Okay. The other... The enterprise piece is for the next bill. This is directed to the committee.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Vice President, this is Colin Tarver with BDC. I apologize. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the Baltimore Together Resolution.
Sure. Councilwoman Ramos, your question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Colin, for coming on. My question was, can you go into a little bit of detail about what the Neighborhood Equitable Development Strategy looks like within this bigger strategy?
Yeah, so basically, we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. So if you look at the section there on neighborhood investment and community redevelopment, we basically mirrored the partners in terms of primarily HCD's Framework Plan. So if you look at the investment areas, those are the same that is in the Community Development Framework Plan under Commissioner Kennedy. And then we just tried to add any additional pieces. So it's not a duplicate... It's not a reinvention of what was already put together. We just tried to continue to restate that. I believe HCD added maybe one or two additional areas that aren't in the Framework Plan. For some reason, I think South Baltimore Gateway Area isn't in the Framework Plan, but that was something that they're working on. There may have been one additional area that's mentioned in this plan that goes beyond the Framework Plan.
So then, what is... So what does that exactly mean? So when you talk about that there's going to be concentration in certain areas, and I know I'm very familiar with the impact investment areas. I have one in my district. Does that mean that BDC is going to be working on collaborating to make sure that there's, in addition to housing reinvestment, that there's business development? I'm trying... I'm sorry that I... Yeah, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, so again, like Baltimore Together officially is the city's economic, comprehensive economic development strategy. So it's focused on economic development, but it has a broad range that goes from workforce and includes community development. So the idea here is it's not a BDC plan, but it's a city plan. And so what the idea is around that is that, yes, as HCD is making investments in those key impact investment areas, we would want not just BDC, but other partners to align investment to reinforce what HCD is doing and not either duplicate or, you know, go in a different direction. But the idea is to have one unified plan. And so in that vein, as Planning Department, for example, goes and works on their comp plan, which they've started to do, we want them to incorporate Baltimore Together. So we incorporated existing plans with the idea of aligning services. So now with Baltimore Together, BDC is looking at those impact investment areas more closely to figure out how our services can support the community development work. But hopefully, other partners too. So it's not just BDC, but any partners that are involved in those areas.
So is... Are there direct links to this, or is there an application?
It's not an application. It's more of a strategy document. So there is. There's a website, baltimoretogether.com, where people can, one, download the full document, and then, two, they can also sign up for updates. We're currently in the process of searching for a director of Baltimore Together. So one of the things that we're doing differently this time, we've done plans in the past, but then they've just sort of been there. This time, we're actually hiring a dedicated person who's going to be fully solely focused on implementation. So when that person comes on board, hopefully in the next four to eight weeks, they'll be picking up where we left off in terms of the collaboration and starting those conversations again. And then also be tracking everything. So in the back of the report, there's an Implementation Matrix, which is 99 specific action items. And so those are things that we'll be working on. And again, it's not just BDC, but it's a whole range of collaborative partners from nonprofit to private sector to city agencies.
So, Madam Chair, I have another couple of questions, if that's okay. So the... I see in the resolution it's about getting approval so that, um... The Economic Development Administration would then, you know, know that this is our... These sets of action items are our strategies and that we might be applying for money from them to implement. Is that correct?
Yeah, the formality of this is that the city is required by the... As you said, it's the Economic Development Administration, which falls under the U.S. Department of Commerce. In order to be eligible for those EDA funds, we must have a quote-unquote SEDs Plan, which is this Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. It's a mouthful. We've called it Baltimore Together for simplicity. And so having this plan officially submitted and approved by EDA is the final step. We've actually done that. We did that in November. And this doesn't require a council approval necessarily, but we thought it was really important to bring the council into the conversation and hopefully get your endorsement today. We did the same thing with the Planning Commission in December, which we hadn't done in the past. But we've been trying to make this process, and in particular, this Baltimore Together initiative, a much more publicly engaged process. And so that's why we wanted to bring this resolution before you today.
Thank you. And so we're about to go into comprehensive planning. So is... Does this happen... Being a new councilperson, does this happen every two years that you have to do something for the EDA?
This plan is every five years.
Every five?
Yeah.
So it sounds like it's similar to, if I may, similar to, um... The DHD has to submit a plan to CDBG every year, but every year, to say, these are the basic things that we're going to be waking our CDBG grant-making so that then we have that plan. It's a public plan. And that way, those funds from CDBG come to help us with those specific strategies. That sounds like that's what this is, correct?
I would actually probably make this more akin to the city comp plan, which is supposed to be done every 10 years, which Director Ryer and his team are starting to do. I would say that the SEDs Plan is less about prescribing funding from EDA, which frankly, we don't get that much of anyway. And it doesn't necessarily come to the city. It can come to partners. It's more of a vision and strategy document, like the city's comprehensive master plan, as opposed to like CDBG, which is much more, I think, stringent in terms of how you're spending those federal dollars. This is really more for us as a community to figure out where we want to head in terms of economic development.
Do you have a marketing strategy for the CED grants?
They're not grants. That all comes through EDA. They... The federal government, they have opportunities for that. We'll usually provide a letter of support. They tend to be hard to get, and they're discretionary. Again, I've used Baltimore Together as... Instead of using it as a document to go after federal funding, I really use it as a way to organize our economic development vision. But as those NOFA's come out from EDA, we're happy to like share those on our social media and let folks know about them. Occasionally, BDC will apply for them. Sometimes, we'll apply for them regionally. And then other times, specific entities, you know, nonprofits or others, will apply for those for a specific project.
And how does this dub... Sorry, how does this dovetail with the mayor's action plans?
So this is included. So the mayor's obviously written a letter in their introductory. So a number of the actions that are part of the pillars are also in Baltimore Together. So we've kind of dovetailed them to the extent that we could. There was a little bit of a different process, but they did overlap. So we were able to get a number of the actions that are in the mayor's plan are also in Baltimore Together.
Does this link to the Comprehensive Master Plan, I guess, through planning, through the Planning Department?
It will. That process is just kicking off. And so I think there's an Economic Prosperity or Economic Inclusion Committee, and that's being chaired by Larissa Salamaca of BDC, who is obviously very instrumental in putting together this document. So hopefully, most of, if not all of, what Baltimore Together represents will be adopted in the comp plan, probably at a higher level because the comp plan is going to... You touch on even more things than Baltimore Together. But that's the idea, that they would all sync up together.
Does the committee have any further questions for Colin or Kim? I'm sorry, Robert, Councilman Stokes.
Yes, this is for Colin. Colin, I know you say you are mirroring what Housing have already have in place. And my concern is, would Housing already have in place what you mirrored does not work? Because what happened to this? You have CDCs. I have... Councilwoman Miller, you have Park Heights. Jews have a CDC. I have Broadway East CDC. I have Midway. Those are the organizations that's always cut out. You know, who are your partners? You say nonprofits. Why wasn't the CDC's part of this conversation? So when you say you mirrored something, y'all mirrored something that don't work because the CDCs, these CDCs in these districts, never get the opportunity to sit at the table. And it's the same nonprofits over and over and over. So when you mirror something that don't work, that's a concern for me. So why are we still mirroring stuff that has not worked? You got the impact money in Broadway East. You got it in Midway. How is the CDC going to take advantage of that when what you mirrored has not worked so far? And it's the same nonprofits. Who are your partners? You said partners. Who are your partners?
So, I mean, I'm not going to expound upon HCD's strategy. That's not my role as BDC leader.
But it's my role. So if you mirror something that don't work, I have to... I have some concerns about that.
Yeah, I understand that you have concerns about HCD's strategy, but the idea of this document was to basically compile and share everything that the city's working on across a pretty wide spectrum that affects economic development. So I don't know if it's my purview to address.
No, I'm not asking you to do it. I'm saying, from my personal experience, what you mirrored at HCD has not worked because, again, those CDCs in the community do not get those same opportunities as these same old nonprofits or your partners. That's my concern. And I'm not asking you to comment on it. I'm saying, when you mirror something like that and it hasn't worked, it's the same process. Nothing going to change. So you got... We talking about vacant houses in poor black neighborhoods. How do they benefit from that? They don't. Because it's the same mirrored nonprofits and partners that y'all had all this time, and it don't get passed down to the CDCs that in the community is really doing the work and have to deal with all these vacant houses in their communities.
Point well taken, Councilman Stokes. I do see Stephanie Murdock from Housing on here. If she would like to interject your comments for Housing?
Hi, Madam Chair. This legislation was not assigned to us today. So I was listening in just purely out of interest. And I will take this conversation back to our senior team.
Thank you. Colin, do you have any further comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Dorsey. I see your hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colin, I'm looking at a couple pages here. One thing I just heard you say to Councilman Stokes is basically you're compiling all of the city's existing efforts in order to kind of present them. But on the other hand, it does say it's a strategy. You know, it's a strategy document. That, to me, sounds about like we're planning a strategy to go forward, not just showing what we've already got in the works. And so... And again, I don't know if you heard kind of my opening comments to Kim, you know, but to me, I think there are some elements here that are missing.
to Kim, you know, but to me, I think there are some elements here that are missing from what I would think of as necessary. If we're really, if we were to call an economic development strategy comprehensive. And with those missing elements, it's hard for me to consider it comprehensive. And then also, with certain geographic areas left out, it's also equally hard for me to consider it comprehensive. I'm really curious about the map that I saw on page, what was it, like 50? It was 54 or something, maybe, of the the commercial corridors. I mean, I've got a commercial corridor on Hartford Road. It's not even included on here. It's a main street. It's not included on here.
I'll have to check exactly which exhibit that you're looking at, but.
Fifty-eight. No, 59. It shows commercial corridors in Liberty Heights, around Frederick Ave and Hilton, Pennsylvania Avenue, Pig Town, Hollins Market, Highland Town, Greets Town, Bayview, Waverly, Greenmount. It doesn't show anything for farther up York Road. It doesn't show anything for Hartford Road, Allen Edison.
Yeah, no, I would agree with you that there are additional commercial corridors that aren't on this map. I'd have to go back and sort of figure out the context of why there's obviously a number of them missing, not just your district. These may be specific ones that BDC is focused on in the short term. Maybe there's a line with some of the HCD impact investment areas. But the document overall is, I mean, to go back to your original statement, we tried to capture a lot of what is positive that's happening in the city. It doesn't mean that we've captured everything that's going on, and it also doesn't mean that there's not new ideas incorporated in here. It's kind of a mix. We didn't want to start from scratch. There's a lot of good work that is happening that isn't being talked about necessarily. At the same time, there are new ideas in here that we hope to move forward as well. So I do know your concern on the commercial corridor map.
But also, I mean, transportation, it's basically a non-existent element in here, except for what it discusses around basically southeast, as it regard.
Well, with due respect, Councilman, there's a number of larger issues that go beyond economic development that affect economic development, transportation, public safety, public education. Those are noted in the report, but we did not take those on in this document. It's just too, it would be too much. That really needs to be its own exercise, and BDC didn't lead that, but we did acknowledge some of those more systemic issues.
But if BDC is tasked with like steering the city's ship for economic development, how can it be left out? How can it be left?
It wasn't left out. It was noted, but it wasn't expounded upon in this report because we didn't have the depth or the time to get into that. Public safety, public education, or some of the other issues that we talk about that affect the work that we do every day. But this document is already like 100 pages, and that was trimmed down, so we can only take on so much. I'd also say that this is a five-year plan, but we're going to update it every year. So it's not meant to be a static report. But as we move forward, we'll be saying what we're doing. We'll be saying what's working. We'll be saying what's not working, and we'll adjust accordingly.
Okay.
So Colin, I see you, I'm hoping that you're taking note of, I guess, all the comments and suggestions. And I guess you're looking at this as, this resolution as maybe a jumpstart of what you're going to continue to do. Is that correct?
Yeah, this is the five-year document, but like I said, we'll be updating and revising in a minimum on an annual basis, and that's also required by EDA. So I apologize. When we got the schedule, it said like a two or three-minute timeframe for this. I would have been happy to give you like the full presentation. I've been able to reach a couple of council members, not everyone. But the way it was scheduled, it looked like we only had like two or three minutes, which is difficult to summarize a 100-page document. So I'm also happy to give the full PowerPoint to the council at any time, even if it's not during a hearing, and share the deck with all the council members.
Oh, well, that two or three minute didn't come from our committee.
Okay.
But does the committee have any other questions? Any other committee members? Okay, at this point.
Madam Chair, I just one quick question. Thank you for that. I think it makes sense to have the full presentation. That would be helpful. I also, I will take more time to actually look through this, but I really want to understand the, how you're going to address our Latino businesses that are growing so quickly and may have language barriers and other, you know, populations that may have language barriers, how they're going to be able to participate.
Sure. Yeah, Mima was part of our stakeholder group, and we're working with them, obviously, on language access and other issues that affect specific populations. Again, this is like an overview document, so we'll also be, as we move forward, we'll take on specific issues. So if there needs to be more work done for engagement, we can do that and put together the right stakeholders. This isn't meant to be more of a roadmap forward, as opposed to, you know, a point, an end game. This is really the beginning of moving us forward.
Okay, thank you. And just a statement, I guess, to all the agencies, a reminder that the time of how hearings are scheduled does not dictate the length of our hearings because we sometime have very complicated decisions to make and work sessions and so on. So we never dictate how long a agency can, has to have dialogue back and forth with council members. And that's just, you know, to give to all the agencies as we move forward. So does the committee have any further questions for Colin? Colin, thank you for stepping in. I know Kim had started off, and you came to the.
Yeah, sorry. This is definitely more my bailiwick. So Kim, I apologize to Kim for putting her on the spot there. I'm happy to speak to you all about this.
So we're now going to check for, the committee will now take public testimony. And just a reminder, computer users, please use your raise hand function if you wish to testify. When called upon, please state your name. Telephone users will be muted. Callers will hear two beeps. If you do not wish to testify, please say so. If you do wish to testify, please state your name. We are now checking for any hands raised. And I do not see any. And now we are checking for callers. And I see one caller. Sorry if I pronounced your name wrong. Is that Rins? Hello? Rins, are you trying to get on? Okay, no comment. So does committee members have any further questions or comments? Okay, there are no amendments to this.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This is a comment. I'd be much more comfortable taking a vote on this some other day, when we've had some more time to review a presentation.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion.
Yeah, Council, Vice President, I think we should, because right now, if we take a vote, I'm voting no.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to delay the vote on this resolution. So we're going to call a recess on this particular bill.
Madam Vice President, I would love to figure out how we can get a proper kind of presentation scheduled, whether it's informational or otherwise. I think that was a missed opportunity, and we'd be happy to do that. I don't think it was communicated clearly that we would have the opportunity to do that, so.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. We'll put this resolution in recess. Do I hear any objections from any committee members? Hearing none. This particular bill is in recess. And now we're going to move on to the next bill, which is 22-0096R, approving the submission application to the state of Maryland for the redesignation of Baltimore City's modified enterprise zone, consolidated enterprise zone and its focus area for the purpose of approving the submission of an application to the state of Maryland to redesignate Baltimore City's modified enterprise zone and its focus area. For the, this bill was introduced on March 7, 2022. This bill was sponsored by the council president on behalf of the administration and BDC. And do we have anyone from the office of the president that would like to comment on this bill before we move on? Okay, we'll move on to agency reports. We'll now hear from the agencies, and we'll start with the city solicitor's office.
Hi, Madam Chair. Yes, we approve this bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Hillary. And then now the Baltimore Development Corporation. Kim, you're on.
Good afternoon. This is Kim Clark, Executive Vice President with Baltimore Development Corporation. What is before you was a council resolution concerning the redesign, a submission of an application for the redesignation of the enterprise zone for Baltimore City. The enterprise zone has been Baltimore City's most successful economic development tool. It has created thousands of jobs over the 20-plus years that it's been in existence. The enterprise zone is created. There are several steps that need to be taken for the enterprise zone designation. And in addition to that, the enterprise zone focus area. What the enterprise zone program is, as well as the focus area, is a tax credit to developers and to businesses. It's both a real property tax credit and an employment tax credit. It helps to create opportunities for Baltimore City residents, and we have found that it's been very successful in Baltimore City and would like to submit an application to the Department of Commerce for redesignation. The current enterprise zone expires on June 30, 2022, and the timeline is that we must submit an application to the Department of Commerce by April 15 for their approval by June 30 to become effective on July 1, 2022. The statistics for qualifying for an enterprise zone, it must meet at least one of the following requirements. The average, and this is based upon census tracts. The average rate of unemployment is at 5.5%. The poverty level is at 13.125%. 70% of families make less than $50,000. The population in the area has decreased by 10%. So it's at least one of those requirements to become eligible for the enterprise zone tax credit. And the statistics that census tracts must eat to, for the focus area, the average unemployment, they must meet at least three of the following. Average rate of unemployment at 5.5%, poverty level at 12.9%, a minimum of 20% of commercial property is vacant. The average crime rate is 114.4%. And the percentage of occupied housing units without plumbing is 1.2% or without kitchens is 0.6%. So it's a little bit complicated of a process that we have to go through in that it's the residential properties that meet the qualifications for the enterprise zone tax credits. But the tax credits can only be applied to commercial property. So that is why the crazy map that you see, it is for commercial property, qualified commercial property in those maps. The map is meant as an FYI for you all. It is not part of the resolution. The resolution is simply approving for us to submit the application to the Department of Commerce for the enterprise zone.
Thank you, Kim. Let's go ahead and move on to the Department of Finance, because you did a fonte that was a good write-up, very informative report about enterprise zones and tax credits. So you're on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pedro Ponte, Assistant Budget Director on the REMU side. We, in general, stand by our report. We support the reassignment of the area. The enterprise zone, in general, the tax rate has been in place since 1990, and currently is one of the most expensive tax rates that the city has, but at the same time, is one of the credits that has helped to develop certain areas in the city that we believe otherwise wouldn't, the market wouldn't apply in those areas as well. One item that is important to highlight in reference to the enterprise and the focus area is that we get 50% reimbursement from the state of the cost of the credit. So when we look at $17 million city cost, in reality, the tax rate is $34 million annually. This is a process that we had to go through every five years, five years. I think five years ago was a resignation for, redesignation for the focus area. Now we are up for the enterprise zone, and we have to go through this process frequently. And I'll be, I mean, I don't have any more commentary in reference, but if you have any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer them.
Thank you, Pedro. Just one question from me, back to BDC. You had mentioned, you had made some change, not amendments, but there were some changes on the map. Can you just mention what those were?
Sure. So the platform that we used, to, the GIS platform that we use to incorporate the criteria. And so as I said, it's for commercial property. There was an area of the University of Maryland BioPark. The property is known as 4 MLK. It's to be a new development over at the BioPark. There was a portion of that property that didn't show up as being, one, acquired by the University of Maryland, and two, rezoned to a commercial property. We were notified by the BioPark that, no, 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 here's the zoning bill, and it does show up in city view as the appropriate zoning, but the platform that we had available to us for our GIS person did not have that rezoning. So we added those particular properties into the map as they do qualify. And I notified Councilman Bullock and Councilman Costello as both their districts were affected by that change.
Thank you, Kim, for that, those details. Do committee members have any comments or questions? Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kim, are there areas within the proposed enterprise zones that could qualify as focus areas but which have not been deemed focus areas?
Thank you for the question, Councilman. We qualified everything that could possibly qualify for the focus area as focus areas, and then qualified everything that could qualify as enterprise zone for enterprise zone. So the first layer was enterprise zone. And then, once we had that layer, then we went and looked at our areas that could qualify for focus areas. So then they were qualified as focus areas.
And I understand that the general parameter is around census tracts? Were there any other, I just don't know the way that it designated, and you did talk about this. But is there any, like, additional consideration, for example? There might be an area where all of your commercial development may be on one side of the street, and so that's in one particular census tract, but directly across the street, there is no commercial development. across the street, there is no commercial development, but that census tract would meet the requirements?
So.
Is there anything, like, related to proximity to census tracts?
So what we tried to do was be mindful, especially of the commercial corridors, especially a Bel Air Road, a Hartford Road, a York Road, a Reisterstown Road, a Liberty Road, that are extremely long and, and pretty complex, and that will have sections of qualifying census tracts and also have sections of non-qualifying census tracts. So we, we posed the question to Commerce, and we actually did this 10 years ago, the last time, and they continued, they allowed for us to continue the practice this time. If there was a census tract that qualified, that touched the commercial corridor, then we were able to qualify the whole commercial corridor. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that applies for both enterprise zones and for the focus area designation?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, okay, because the, the area that I was curious about is on here as an enterprise zone area, a Northern Parkway at McLean Boulevard, and, you know, the, the, it's a big shopping plaza there, and it's on the south, the southeast corner of that intersection, and that's in one census tract. But on this, the northeast, the northwest, and the southwest corner of that intersection, that plaza is surrounded by the lowest income, most highly populated population, densely populated portion of my whole district, and, you know, has a much lower income level than the census tract that that, that, that plaza is actually in. Just cur, I was curious if there was any possibility that that could have qualified as a focus area?
We can, we'll take a look, but I think what happened in the particular plaza that you're speaking about, remember, so, I shouldn't say remember, I'm the one that should be remembering that, you guys, because some of this is all new to you guys. So this is a, the tax credits are applied to the incremental increase in taxes as a result of the development or business that is built on that property. So if there's no redevelopment or development, there's no incremental taxes, because you can't get the tax credits on taxes that are created as a result of reassessment.
Yeah, I would love to see redevelopment at that site.
Yeah, so, so that's what we're hearing that. Right, right. So, yeah, and it also has to, it's this crazy thing that it all has to kind of touch. So we're able to weave through the various commercial districts because of touch points, but there's going to be certain, and especially this comes to effect with shopping centers, because they're kind of on an island, and it happens a lot in northeast, northwest, and southwest Baltimore, that these pockets of shopping centers are on this island in the middle of surrounding residential development, which is how they developed, you know, in the, in the late 40s and 50s. I mean, I live in an area in Baltimore City, in northeast Baltimore, that's exactly like that. It's surrounded by residential, so it would be tough to link that to a connecting commercial area to be included in the zone as a whole. So if that shopping center would ever get redeveloped, or we would try to look at other opportunities that we could create to, to further that development.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for using that as an example. I don't want us to get, spend all of our time on individual districts as we move on, but, Kim, it might just be an example of where BDC might need to set up individual meetings with, down the road, since we're going to be starting in-person stuff April 4th, setting up meetings with individual council members since.
Happy to do that, happy to do that.
Half our council is fairly new. Councilman Stokes, was your hand up?
Yes. I don't know how many hands I had to show you, Council. This is for you, Ms. Kim. I have, we working on the Broadway corridor also, from Fells Point up Broadway, but on St. Paul, 25th Street, I have black-owned business there, going down St. Paul Street, on 25th Street, going west. And I said this to Colin before, why is it, and I think Shalana Stokes did a great idea down, having those black businesses down at, where they located and close to Fells Point, but BDC has not come in out of that hole downtown corridor to go into these communities where you got small, black-owned business that's struggling, that never get a chance to even get funded. So we, we keep talking about these, these big funding sources for these big business, but you got businesses now that's actually operating. I went and talked to a lot of them on 25th Street the other day. They, they get no help. So why we keep going to the same places and dealing with the same businesses, not talking about the small business in this city that's making this city move, but they never get an opportunity, get no funding for BDC. It's the same, I keep saying, it's the same nonprofit, the same network. They gotta come out of, from downtown and go into these communities. If you don't know where the business are, how are you going to help them? BDC do not go in these small, on these communities where you had these small businesses to see what they need. There's no conversation with them. And I get frustrated because I keep hearing all this nice stuff, but it's not on 25th Street, it's not on Broadway, it's not on St. Paul Street. And I've been saying this for four years, when is BDC going to go and talk to those small, black-owned business that's operating now, that need help?
We definitely all get your point, because I have the same issue, you know, in Park Heights and parts of areas like Forest Park, and I think all of us can share some areas that need definite attention in there, in those small.
BDC gotta stop having tunnel vision and stop looking at downtown. That's what I think it is. I mean, it's just, I hear it all the time.
Would you like to, thank you, your point well taken, Councilman Stokes. Kim, would you like to comment on his comments?
With all due respect, BDC over the last two years has given out over $22 million to BIPOC-owned businesses located throughout Baltimore City, including on 25th Street, Charles Street, St. Paul Street, Broadway, Park Heights, they've been throughout the city. That having been said, now that we're coming out and people are more comfortable with one-on-one connections to businesses, I'm happy to connect our folks to get back out on the streets and connect with these businesses. If there's any in particular that you would like us to reach out to, happy to do that, but we can also do a walkthrough with the council folks in these particular areas. So just let us know, and you can contact me, and I can help connect to the right person on our geographic teams.
Thank you.
I, I know that with, as far as Park Heights, the director of the Renaissance has been in contact with Colin to build a partnership there, so thank you for that.
Super.
Any other comments that we can move on with this bill?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Just two questions. I, I definitely would like to have a briefing, because the map on my, in my district looks a little strange with all of Johns Hopkins University included. I don't understand that. And, so, I will connect. The second thing is that there is, there is a bill in Annapolis being pending right now that doesn't have anything to do with enterprise at all, but there was an amendment tacked onto it. It's House Bill 27, that, there's an amendment tacked onto it that basically provides enterprise zone tax credit to specific properties in Baltimore City that would, would add an obligation to us of $3 million. Do you know about this? Like, I think it's a, something's wrong there, because we, you know, the tax credit only lasts a few, you know, and if people don't take advantage in the right amount of time, then they need to, you know, not, do you know about that, and have we addressed this issue?
All right, so, so two things. One, there, there is a bill that has been introduced that amends the enterprise zone. We have voiced a response in opposition to that bill. The second is, what is, what's the bill number again that you're speaking about?
House Bill 27. It's actually the historic revitalization tax credit.
House bill?
That's a House Bill, 27. Yeah, we, we should, that's all the details that I have. I was just given notice about it, but it basically would re-obligate us to some of the existing, to one or two of the existing enterprise zone areas, and the, the credit has already expired, apparently. So that, we just need to look into it, that's all.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then, if you don't mind, and I do apologize if you covered this already, and I do apologize, Madam Chair, the difference between the focus areas and the, what's it, the other piece? Yeah.
The focus area is the enterprise zone on steroids. Just think of it that way. So the focus area, here we go, I don't know. The focus area is 80% for 10 years, whereas the, the enterprise zone is 80% for five years and then builds up and increments. The focus area is 80% for the full 10 years.
If, may I add a comment really quick? That's the structure of the credit, but it's based on different criterias for the selection. So the, the core is enterprise zone, and it has to meet one of the criteria that Kim explained before, but to be a focus area, it needs to have, it needs to meet three criterias. So the credit is a little bit on the rose for the remain, for the next five years.
What's the additional criteria?
So the credit is more enhanced in the focused area.
Yeah, but Pedro just said that the focus area has another layer of criteria.
Correct. I can read it. If you don't have it, Kim, I can find it.
No, I already read it, and I can read it again. So the statistics for, so in the enterprise zone, you need to meet one of four criteria.
I have that, I have that, yep.
For the focus area, you have to meet at least three of five criteria.
Okay, at least three of the already existing five. So we're not adding a layer, we're just adding the intensity.
Instead of just one of four, you have to meet three of the five. And quite frankly, for the focus area, we usually have to go out and do an inventory of the commercial property to, to reach that 20%, because it is so stringent and it is a superlative credit. So we, you know, we, we, we try to be as conservative as possible, but also look at opportunities for investment in Baltimore City, and how can we enhance that?
Okay, yeah, we'll definitely have to have a one-on-one, because I have no idea why parts of Remington would be included as a focus area.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I just have a request real quick. Can we get Ms. Kim to?
Go ahead.
Yes, I'm sorry. I just want to request, is I, can we get Ms. Kim to give us a list of those businesses that received funding through BDC in the last, I guess, five years?
It's not funding, Councilman, it's a tax credit, and it's all applied for through the Department of Finance.
Okay, can you, can we get a list of that? Do you have that list compiled?
For the last five years?
If you can do it, yes.
I see.
Because I know we had COVID for two years, so that's why I said five.
Councilman, we'll, we will cover that. Finance Department will cover that.
Thanks.
So get that list to.
Thank you.
Get that list to Jennifer, and then Jennifer will disperse it to the committee. From Pedro, correct? Okay.
Thanks, Pedro.
All right, yes, no, you're welcome.
Okay, so now the committee will take public testimony. We're checking, and I don't see any hands raised. And so now we're going to take callers. If you hear two beeps, that means it's your turn. Hello? Whoops. No response. Move to the next. Paul, are you, did you want to testify on this bill? Clement? I see your name. Hearing no response. Okay, there's no public testimony, and we have no amendments. Is there a motion to move this bill with the request that we had, and suggestions we've asked? Do I have a motion? So moved, so moved by, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dorsey. Chair Middleton, yes? Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes? Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes? Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes? Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes? Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes? And Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes? Okay, thank you. This bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. Thank you, Kim and Colin.
Thank you all very much. Really appreciate you getting right to this, since we are trying to meet some tight, tight deadlines with regard to our application to the state. So really appreciate you all. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, the next bill is Bill Number 22-0192, Transit and Traffic Impoundment or Immobilization Chronic Offenders for the Purpose of Authorizing the Baltimore City Police Commissioner to impound or immobilize the vehicle of a certain person, defining certain terms in generally relating to chronic offenders of parking ordinances. This bill was introduced on January 10, 2022. The bill's sponsor is Councilman Dorsey, member of the committee. Councilman Dorsey, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. This bill, at its core, is about public safety. You know, there, there is a huge constituency that exists throughout this city, and Lord knows, well beyond the borders of this city, who want us to talk about absolutely nothing but public safety, and who, basically, we can't talk about anything at all as legislators without somebody saying, yeah, but what are you doing about public safety? And the truth is that there are a few things that we can do directly legislatively that can have a real and meaningful and direct impact on public safety conditions in the city. This is one of them. And it's one that, that I hear people, you know, addresses a concern that I hear people talk about all the time. Everywhere people go, they're saying, why are drivers so crazy? It seems like drivers are getting even crazier. It seems like, it seems like streets are crazier than ever. Cars are crashing and, you know, properties being damaged, and how do I get things to slow down on my street, and, you know, what are we going to do about this? And one, this bill addresses the fact that while we have certain tools at our disposal, there are areas in which we fall short, and the law department is going to tell you about ways in which we fall short. uh in which we fall short so far that we can't even do what this bill proposes because we don't have the legal authority to do it. Um, I want to talk about its intent. We have 140-some cameras around the city for uh well, the law, the the DOT report has exact numbers in it. They didn't, you know, more than 100 speed cameras, more than 100 red light cameras all around the city ticketing people for the purpose of public safety improvement. Unfortunately, when people decide not to pay those tickets, there is nothing further that we do or can do effectively to address those drivers as a public safety menace. The only thing that I have found through talking to other nearby jurisdictions, Howard County and Baltimore County, the only further step that we can take beyond issuing those tickets is to sue them in court for the money due. And that's just not, I don't really care about that. I don't care about the money. I care about the immediate public safety concern of having those vehicles driven around which are being driven in the least safe fashion on a continuous basis. The state creates a designation, they call it chronic offenders for those vehicles that have accrued over a a a thousand dollars or more in outstanding violations. And the intent of this bill is to use that same definition as a precedent and standard to say Baltimore City should do something itself about those same vehicles. For reference, that state provision comes in the same section of code that says that uh a driver who gets tickets from a local jurisdiction and fails to pay those tickets, if reported to MVA, can have a flag placed on their license so that they can't reregister the vehicle. It goes a step further for people with a thousand dollars or more and says if the local jurisdiction reports those people to the MVA, not only, not, they won't just put a flag on the license so they can't be, the vehicle can't be reregistered. MVA will actually send out a notice of suspension of registration to the vehicle for chronic offenders. The problem is that the drivers who are willing to get 10 and 20 and 50 and in some cases more than 100 or 200 tickets are also the drivers who are just going to say, hey, I can't reregister the vehicle or they sent me a letter that says my tags are suspended. To hell with them and just keep driving around on a suspended registration or expired tags. And so where the city, where the where the state uh falls short in having real leverage to get these drivers, these vehicles off the street that are being driven, you know, menacingly on a regular basis. Uh, and I'm hoping that the city can step in and and take measures by simply saying, if we find those cars, we will boot them. We will tow them so that they can no longer be driven unless those people can come up with the money. But as you'll hear from the Law Department, we can't do that. The state only gives us the authority to regulate in such a way as pertains to parking tickets, not traffic violations. Um, and we're not allowed to treat these kind of traffic violations, which may be different in definition from a moving violation. We're not allowed to treat these automated enforcement tickets like we do parking tickets. We don't have anything that we can actually do here. Um, so the Law Department is going to tell us that this bill is essentially dead on arrival unless we amend it.
Can we hear, uh, Councilman, can we hear from the agencies?
Take one more minute, Madam Chair. Just one one more second. Appreciate it.
One more second.
The Law Department is going to tell us this bill is dead on arrival. I've come to accept that, I suppose. Um, what I had hoped is that we could at least use this hearing to examine some data that I asked the Department of Transportation to work to put together. They've not been able to do that, so we can't even have the discussion that I hope could be a productive outcome of this hearing. That's all I have to say at this point. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, so let's go ahead and hear from the Department of Transportation first. Uh, Liam, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. Thank you for having us today. Just wanted to kind of follow up to some of the testimony provided by the bill sponsor, Councilman Dorsey. I think the merit of the legislation is something that DOT can certainly get behind and we're interested in continuing continuing this conversation. And uh, you know, assuming the conversation continues, I think we can have further conversations um and more opportunities to look at data um that the Councilman has requested that we do. So when we're when we're talking about uh Baltimore City Department of Transportation's ATVS Division, that's the Automated Traffic Violation Enforcement System. There's three specific automated camera operations. Um, one is our school zone speed camera operations, which currently has 144 cameras deployed across the city. We also have our automated red light camera program, which is deployed at 143 locations. And then the the smaller program is our automated truck enforcement camera program. Um, just to, just to to provide a sense of scale in terms of the amount of violations being issued um during the month of January 2022, over 27,000, 27,000 speeding violations were issued um and over 16,000 individual red light enforcement violations were issued. Why is this important? Obviously, as the Councilman had stated, the cameras, the automated enforcement system is put in place for the purpose of public safety, especially when you're coming from um the perspective of Department of Transportation. Um, we determine where the cameras go. Determining that those locations are based on a number of factors, including crash data, speed data, stakeholder engagement, which sometimes comes from community leaders or 3-1-1 requests or your offices in the city council or your your colleagues and our representatives down in Annapolis. All of those are considered and we have an internal review committee that determines where the cameras are going to go. When we say this is a public safety issue, why? Well, the rolling average for Baltimore City is annually, we're talking over 18,000 reported crashes per year. 18,000. That's like 45 to 50 crashes per day happening every day all over the city. Um, and that has a tremendous um drain on resources, not just limited to DOT, obviously first responders. And, you know, as the Councilman uh who sponsored this legislation has noted previously, there's a tremendous amount of damage to both public and private property. Um, in terms of crash reporting, um DOT follows, uh works with Baltimore Police Department to follow policy 905, traffic crash investigating and reporting. All crashes resulting in a motor vehicle being towed away, personal injury or fatality are considered reportable crashes and are investigated. There's other factors that are also um considered reportable crashes. But I think the big takeaway here is that 18,000 figure, which is reported crashes, doesn't actually tell the whole story because those are only the reported crashes. There's other incidences happening across the city that don't go reported and the number is likely higher. First respondent officers examine the evidence and the the data is recorded with the Maryland Automated Crash Reporting System. Uh, that data is then essentially scrubbed and eventually submitted to DOT on an annual basis. So we're getting updated crash data like once every year and then that helps us review to determine, okay, which traffic calming projects are working, which automated camera projects are working, which areas need more work. That's actually happening on a consistent basis. We had our hearing last week about uh the state of stat. We have Vision Zero Stat. It's literally a internal multi-division uh meeting that meets regularly within DOT and the sole purpose is to achieve zero auto-related uh crash-related deaths. We have a long way to go. Um, but looking at the data uh that we we have been provided, I know that the the Chair, or excuse me, the um bill sponsor, Councilman Dorsey, was was very helpful in sharing some da- data ahead of time. And it looks like we have to talk with Finance Department just to make sure our numbers are right, but we it's definitely in the several thousands of vehicles that have over 1,000 unpaid citations and that accounts for over 100,000 uh unpaid automated enforcement citations, representing a significant portion. This small group of drivers who have over $1,000 worth of unpaid tickets have a disproportionate share of all the unpaid citations there in the system. So again, just to wrap this up, because I know we have taken some time during this hearing, we recommend that um the city council work with DOT and our partner agencies to see how we can make you know, this ordinance work, whether that's seeking state enabling law or identifying some other creative opportunities. We definitely welcome that. We also want to continue the conversation with Councilman Dorsey to meet his expectations for the for the data uh that we were not able to get in time for today's hearing. Um, so again, we in 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 the in the actual merit of the bill, Baltimore City DOT is supportive of the of the uh of the goal here. Uh, but we do understand there's some things that still need to be worked out. Additionally, we do want to flag, uh, we will have to talk, we will have to keep DOT Towing Division and Safety Division looped in on the conversations and we'll have to work with Baltimore City Department of Information Technology to ensure um our teams are equipped to enforce this should the ordinance and authority come in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I I think we want to hear from all the agencies that from this bill were requested to do a write-up first. And then we can decide if we need, as the committee, if we need to do a work session, because there's already been reported that, you know, data would help with certain things, how they're going to roll this out. There's still a lot of unanswered questions. So I'll go now to the city solicitor.
Hello, Madam Chair. This is Hillary Hulley on behalf of the city solicitor's office. Um, Councilman Dorsey's analysis of our bill report is pretty much spot on. Unfortunately, state law doesn't allow local governments to treat violations um recorded on speed cameras as parking violations for purposes of impoundment and booting the car. And that's sort of a short way of of saying what's in our bill report. This particular bill can be approved if lines 21 through 24 on page three are removed. But it would not do what Councilman Dorsey is looking for, which is obviously put some teeth into violating those speed cameras um for these uh chronic offenders. So we would recommend obviously going to the General Assembly and seeking the authority to do that at the local level. And with that, we stand by our reports.
Thank you for your report. And now Department of Finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Peter Ponte, Assistant Director under Revenue side. We uh put together a response based on data we received from BCT. We are supportive of the idea and intention of the bill. Our understanding are and our research indicated something a little bit different that I don't want to bring to uh discussion right now, but I I read, personally read something on the state law where uh stated that um um moving violations can be treated as parking violations under certain circumstances and our analysis was based on on that um um particular section of the the code. Uh, we will revisit just to make sure that we are in conflict uh with what the Law Department is saying, but um our response and our analysis was based on their, you know, that uh particular assumption. And again, but the Department of Finance um still supports the legislation.
Thank you. And then we have Shannon Conway from the Police Department. This would and the way it's written up, it seems like this would be an added duty for the Police Department as well. Shannon, you're on. You're on mute. You're on mute, Shannon. Still on mute. Okay. Jennifer is going to try to unmute. Are you, are you on now? Say something, Shannon. Um, still can't hear you. You might have to go back out and come back in. And she'll bring you in another way. So hold on for a minute. She's going to go out and come back in.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question of Mr. Davis while we're waiting?
Uh, yes, and uh Councilman Dorsey, I right on with you. Go ahead. Um.
Yeah, thank you. Um, thank you so much. So um Liam, you had said that you're getting data only every year? And I'm kind of wondering, you know, I I was, what what I have done in my district just is I've asked the Police Department for 911 calls. And then you can see based on, oh, I had, you know, 12 911 calls on this one night, that must have been an accident, you know, when it's because it says crash on it. And it's not one, it's not 12 different accidents, it's one um crash. So uh we were able to kind of see how many crashes within a six-month or eight-month period to try to understand the intensity of crashes, particularly on 28th and St. Paul or 29th and St. Paul and also on uh 35th and the Alameda. So am I understanding you correctly that D that um the DOT just looks at data every year and says, okay, we're going to do this intersection, this intersection, this intersection and not this sort of periodic data every six to eight months in determining where the work has to go to do a quick build or whatever it is for traffic mitigation?
So ju- uh, the great question. And just to clarify, the data that we receive annually is like the scrubbed data that is verified by, I believe, Maryland State Police. So it's like the official M dot crash data. So that's like the cleanest you can you can go by. Um, so we receive that annually. But over the course of the year, you know, we're using the previous, like a lot of times, you know, your your high crash corridors, your high crash intersections, they typically are the same, you know, over the course of time unless there's a major, you know, capital project or traffic calming project. So a lot of times we're not really surprised to see where where um some of these these high crash areas are are. But, you know, the annual, that annual crash data is like one small speck of the total package of data that DOT is constantly looking at. Like we're, again, we have like, I think it's like 10 individual stat meetings. In traffic stat, I mean, they're reviewing, you know, crash data, they're reviewing 3-1-1 requests. So there's like a lot of factors um beyond just this annual batch of data that factors into our decision-making. I will say though, like, just, I think a lot of the city council is is aware of this. A lot of the requests we take in um that are beyond
A lot of the requests we take in that are beyond like a sign repair or a street lighting outage, some of these take time to plan. So, you know, it's okay to kind of look back at the overall history of the intersection. We might look at crash data for several years. Like, is this just a blip, or is this a trend that really requires attention? So it's more than just, it's more than just the annual data, is the short answer.
We have Shannon waiting to come back in, and then we'll hear her report.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Shannon Conway, Legislative Coordinator for BPD. We stand by our report. We have no objection to the bill. We just defer to DOT.
Okay. So at this point, I think we all understand that there needs to be some information that needs to be given to the sponsor of the bill, and there's, and there still needs to be some dialogue there with DOT. And so that when we, so we, I think it's best if we do recess and come back for another work session, and when this other information is, you know, more formalized and together, because the data is definitely important, and I see the sponsor of the bill, your hand is up.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to address a couple of the agency reports, and I do have a couple of agency questions, if I may.
Okay, because we do have some public testimony, I think. Go ahead.
Great. I'll just be brief. I'll do my best, if you know me. First of all, I just wanted to, for you, Madam Chair, as Shannon was trying to get on, I think you alluded that this might have an impact on BPD. As their report says, there's no BPD impact. Essentially, this would just add to the list of vehicles that Toby Goodwin's shop would be able to put a boot on. So it would just add, you know, add to the list of the bootable cars that they're already dispatching people to address on a daily basis. And, you know, as I would see this as, you know, they might, they might have to do a kind of a, they might have to have some sort of process that they might not presently employ. Kind of right now, they mostly print out a list. They mostly go out with, I think, with tag readers and just kind of cruise around known spots looking for vehicles that could be booted. And if they come across one, they boot it. You know, in this case, they might go to, they might go to the home of registration of the vehicle and say, look, this car's got 150 tickets on it. This is the house that it's registered to. Why don't we head over to where that house is and see if it's there? You know, they might employ some sort of process like that to do some kind of targeted enforcement. For the Finance Department, I do want to highlight, well, I'll come to the Finance Department in just one more second. I want to come back to the Law Department's report. I appreciate Hillary saying that I basically summarized it well. I just, for everybody here, I just want to make sure that there's kind of an understanding of what this is all about. The city already does booting on vehicles that have just three parking tickets. You can have three $32 parking tickets, and we will boot your car. And even if those parking tickets and those vehicles have never been any real public nuisance, menace, you know, never created any real safety problem, we can and we will boot your car for just those three tickets. But we cannot do anything of the sort related to vehicles getting these tickets for running red lights and speeding through neighborhoods and school zones. And so just trying, the intent here was to try to expand this to actually be able to address the drivers that are creating real safety issues. But the state law doesn't allow that, and I appreciate Hillary getting right to the point and saying that to amend this bill in the way that the Law Department suggests it could be amended in order for it to be legal would defeat its purpose. And I appreciate Hillary acknowledging that and making, I think, the suggestion that we should all be taking away here is that what we should really be doing at this point is going to the General Assembly and asking for them to allow us to do this. And as I made, I tried to make the point in my opening statement is that, is I don't want us suing people for money. But right now, that's the only next step beyond issuing tickets. It's the only next step that the state law gives us is to file a suit against a person for the money. That's beside the point of what I'm concerned with. I want to address the safety issue right away. And so to the Finance Department, and this will be my last thing, Madam Chair. To the Finance Department, I've been in conversation with Mara James and with the mayor's office. The Finance Department has not, to date, availed the city of the process that the state does give us for addressing chronic offenders. As I said in my opening statement, the state says, if a local jurisdiction tells us of a vehicle that has been issued more than $1,000 in violations, then we, MVA, if we, if we give MVA those licenses, MVA will send to the owner of that vehicle a notice of the immediate suspension of the registration of that vehicle and order them to turn in the tags. The city of Baltimore has never availed itself of this. It's the same process that we already implement for notifying MVA of unpaid tickets to put a flag on the registration of the vehicle. But we have never availed ourselves of the process for chronic offenders that would have MVA immediately suspending the registration of those vehicles. My understanding, based on a conversation with Mara James today, is that the Finance Department is now working with MVA to make sure that we know exactly what MVA requires, and if they have any special form or anything they need from us like that. And we are now preparing to send that information to MVA and to develop a protocol for how we do this on a rolling or continuous periodic basis. And the numbers right now, I mean, this would be 5,500 vehicles at this point, I think, based on just tickets issued since the ATVES program went back into effect in the summer of 2017. Am I summarizing this pretty accurately, Pedro?
You are absolutely correct, Councilman. We are diligently working on this. We are, we are going to, we are working with the MVA and trying to get the exact information they need for us to process and how often we will be doing this.
Great. And I want to stress that this is an important part of the process, that even if we were able to impound vehicles or boot them here locally, we would be limited really only to those vehicles that we could find parked somewhere in the city. It would give us no authority to do anything for vehicles that are parked outside of the city. And in fact, a significant number of the vehicles that are chronic offender vehicles are not registered in Baltimore City, probably half of them. And so it is really important that we avail ourselves of the process that can address those vehicles and vehicle owners to some degree outside the city at a statewide level. And so I really appreciate the Finance Department working to implement a system to avail ourselves of that process that the state has given us. Madam Chair, I've sent the committee around just the outline that I sent to DOT of the information that I'm seeking. I'm glad to have kind of one-on-ones with members of the committee, so we really understand, so everybody really understands what I'm looking for and how valuable I think this is, not just to this conversation, but to a much larger conversation about automated camera enforcement. I think that because we are five, this July, we will be five years into this iteration of the ATVES program. And I believe that what I'm requesting of DOT is the exact analysis of performance and data that I think this system and everybody in Baltimore City deserves. And I think that it's the most comprehensive way we can answer a lot of different questions that arise on a very regular basis. So I hope that we can reconvene this hearing. Even though this bill may be dead, I would like to reconvene this hearing as soon as we can get that information from DOT and get that report together. Thank you.
Thank you. So I timed you. That was eight minutes.
I tried to do the best I could with every one of them.
So on that note...
Madam Chair, I have one question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. First, Shannon. I have requested this information for a couple of meetings in PSG, so I'm going to request it here now. I would like to know the percentage of time that the Baltimore Police Department spends on addressing crashes, because I think it's like 30 or 40% of their time, and that's insane. So if we can have for the next hearing that data as to how much time Baltimore City Police Department spends on crashes, that would be helpful, because we have to understand how much resources that's taking for all of these people that are not paying the citations and that are causing crashes, right? Because then they're taking resources from other places because our police department is sitting there dealing with the crash. So if we can have that data as well, that would be cool. Thank you.
So the Police Department and the Department of Transportation have their assignments before, and then we'll schedule another work session. So if there's, we just checked, and there are no hands raised and no callers. Hello? It sounds, someone is... Oh, okay. That was Councilman Glover. Councilman Glover, you're, would you mute yourself? So anyway, we're now going to go into recess. Councilman Glover, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to ask while we had some of the agencies online, like, what is the best way to go find information on a city-owned vehicle that does some illegal activity outside the job? Who and where do we find out where that vehicle is located? Because I've been getting to run around to find out where a certain vehicle was located.
Looks like Councilman Dorsey has that answer.
Okay, if I can jump in, because I think I know exactly what the council is referring to. So, Councilman, I provided an update to Jamal on this, I think, last week, and I can hop off the phone as soon as this hearing is done to give you an update on that.
Thank you.
Okay.
And Councilman Dorsey?
Yeah, Councilman Glover, the, I think every city-owned vehicle has an ID number on it, and DGS should have a master list of the assignment and use of every vehicle in the city fleet. They're in charge of any vehicle that is city-owned, not necessarily leased. But everybody who drives a city-owned vehicle has to be certified to be able to do so through the Office of Risk Management, which is part of the Finance Department. And so any, Risk Management should be able to address this straight away. I know that I personally have contacted Risk Management with nothing more than the number on the side of a city-owned vehicle when I saw a city employee behaving in a way they should not.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. We're leading into other subjects now. But at this point, we are now in recess for this bill. Thank you all for holding on.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Have a good evening.